So this morning, I want to say a prayer in honor of our veterans, Father, in the name of Jesus. I thank you for our veterans. I thank you for their service to our country. Thank you for their willingness to risk all so that our nation might dwell in peace and safety. May they find the honor and recognition they deserve. In the name of your divine son, I pray you will heal the physical and psychological wounds some of these veterans have suffered. Bring peace to those who mourn the loss of comrades and keep them and their families safe. Father, I pray our nation would learn to respect and acknowledge those veterans who have served their country well. And this is a quote from Abraham Lincoln, "With malice toward none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right, as God gives us to see the right, let us strive on to finish the work we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds, to care for all who shall have borne the battle, to do all which may achieve and cherish a just and lasting peace among ourselves and with all nations." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First call out to the public. Anyone wish to address the board at this time? There will be another public comment at the end of the meeting. All right, consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Yes, I will second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondence is listed. Any comments on correspondence? Hearing none. We entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda with removal of Mary Beth. She will be here December 8th. She had a conflict come up, so she will give us that quarterly report in December.
So moved.
Or...
Any other additions or corrections? All those in favor of the regular agenda as amended signify to say an aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Matt, you're up.
Good morning.
Morning, Matt.
I come before the board this morning with three quotes for a new piece of equipment I would like to purchase for the drain commission. This will be a mini excavator unit that we would use primarily for majority of our work, which consists of a lot of tile repairs and small jobs. This machine is more desirable for that because primarily it can be moved with a pickup truck and trailer versus the big semis that we have that are sometimes hard to get off-road and find places apart, so...
Well, Matt, the only question I got is did you get three quotes on this?
Yeah, that's so hard.
Okay. Sorry. And can you just briefly explain why you picked the ones that you did?
So, this particular machine is a cat excavator, which the majority of our fleet is cat equipment. I have a great relationship with them. Service is great. Resale is great. Not that I'm really concerned about that, because we don't do a lot of resale of our equipment, but they're very dependable machines. It's tough with heavy equipment work because each manufacturer, you can't get it apples to apples. Like, you know, a John Deere is going to be a little bit different than a Cat versus a Case.
Thank you.
And this particular unit was a new model they just come out with. I've kind of been holding out for because it's larger than the majority of the other brands, but it's still small enough that we can move it with our pickup truck, so...
And this gets paid for not through the general fund of the company, this gets paid through the money that you collect on drain assessments?
Through my equipment fund, yes. So money's generated from the equipment.
So you need a motion?
Before you make a motion, I have a question. Is that okay?
Yep.
Matt, which one of these, I'm not familiar with these companies. Which one of these do you recommend that you've had experience with?
It'd be the first one, the Michigan Cat. That's a two-sided, so...
Okay. Why do you say that?
That's who we've always dealt with, with our cat equipment is Michigan Cat. McAllisters, it's kind of funny. McAllister Cat bought Michigan Cat. So they own, McAllisters own Michigan Cat, but they're still separate. So, you know, I deal with a sales rep through the Lansing store, Michigan Cat. There are some McAllisters in Michigan, but primarily they're in Indiana, so...
So McAllister Cat bid $89,000. They own Michigan Cat who bid $77,000.
And I didn't call the salesman on that, but I think what happened is he didn't apply the municipal discount. That's why it's substantially more, because the second McAllister quote was relatively very close to the Michigan Cat quote.
Okay, and so on the first one that you're talking about, the Michigan Cat one, the warranty is 24 months, right?
Mm-hmm.
2,000 hour standard warranty.
Yeah, I believe that's the same. It would be the same with all three.
Okay.
Because it does specify that on the other quote for $77,000. But it doesn't specify it on the third one, but yeah, that's their standard warranty.
Now, Matt, if I'm reading this right, this says that the interest rate on this loan is 2.99%. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Maybe we should call Ford Motor Company and explain to them that these guys can loan money for vehicles for 2.99%. They don't need to be charged in $7.60.
Yeah, the interest rate is very good.
Holy moly.
They actually have, they were running a zero interest rate that we looked into, but it doesn't apply to municipal. So he said, you know, if you were to pay full price to get the zero interest rate, you'd be paying close to $90,000. So it made more sense to obviously to take the municipal discount.
Right. I'm fine with it.
Okay.
You want a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we allow Matt to purchase the piece of equipment, let's see, Caterpillar and Michigan Cat. That's who you want from, right?
Yep.
Bart? Any further discussion?
Do they put stickers for Michigan State on them for free?
I don't know about that. Depends who you ask.
All right. All those in favor signify to say an aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Happy taking.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. All right. Moving right on, Human Services. Ruth, you're up.
Okay, there was a Michigan State Extension Advisory Council meeting that I participated in. And the biggest news that come out of that meeting is that the head of Michigan State Extension on the state level, who is Dr. Jeff Dwyer, is resigning. He's basically gone right now. His resignation isn't effective until February 28th, but right now he's on study leave and whatever and whatever, and so he's basically gone. So at any rate, the acting director right now is, who is the associate director, is going to be the acting director, and that's Patrick Cuddney. So he's in charge for two months, and then they're going to have Dr. Quentin Tyler from the College of A, and he's going to be the interim director, and he has extension background. And he'll be in charge, and they plan to do a national search for a new director. So what the whole topic of this discussion was is basically when they hired Dr. Dwyer, he did not have any extension background whatsoever. And so, you know, there's always an argument about whether that matters or not. Well, the guy that's coming in as the interim director has extension background. So that was a topic of something that we was talking about. Now, the rest of the discussion primarily revolved around 4H and how to bring 4H back to face-to-face. Obviously, most of what they've been doing has been on a Zoom. And they talked about kids being Zoom fatigue, kids are on virtual school all day, and then they come home at night, and then they're doing 4H on Zoom at night. And so they talked about all different ways and what other places are doing and how to keep 4H, how to keep kids involved in 4H. And Matt said that he was looking for criteria that makes sense and how to keep kids engaged with 4H on Zoom. So that was the second largest part of the discussion that we had. And then the Hillsdale office is open remotely, virtually. I don't think anybody can go in there, but they're working in there. They're working remotely and virtually Monday through Thursday. So you can call there and talk to them or send them messages, and you can still get your business done at the Hillsdale office. And then the rest of what they talked about was the budget. They talked about the change in commissioners. A lot of colleagues are going to have commissioners changing what that means for 4H. They talked about some staff changes, and that was about it. That was a good call. It was a good meeting. So that was Michigan State Extension. And then Julie and I went to Michigan Works. They had a retirement celebration for Bill Slate. And so Julie and I took the certificate, and we drove down to Chelsea, and we drove the car, and we made a presentation to Bill like a lot of other people were doing. There was state people there. There was county people there. All kinds of people were there. And Julie read the certificate and presented it to him, and then I talked a little bit too, so that was real nice. The new director at Michigan Works is Shamar, so he's in charge now. Then I've been working on Lifeways. I went to Lifeways yesterday. I went to the Quality Improvement and Creaturing Committee meeting yesterday. I drove up to Jackson. I went to that. Continuing to work on Lifeways, continuing to work on suicide prevention. And unless there's any questions, that's my report.
Any questions for Ruth? Thank you. Question Garland.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that opportunity. So we've been busy a couple, two weeks, and District 5 has always been busy, but the last couple of weeks have been busy. We've been busy with the Sheriff's Office. We've been busy with a couple of committees. So I had a very pleasant visit a couple of weeks back with the Sheriff's Office. I'm still awaiting the October activity report. Probably will receive it this week until, unless Sheriff has it today. But a couple of things have been introduced, really good, pleasant changes have been introduced with the new administrations at the Sheriff's Office. Officer badges have been created in sync with the necessities, which was really interesting to see. A lot of items related to the necessary items that will be needed in January. That would be purchased in January, the payroll deduction with whatever purchase will be done, but nothing yet. I don't have any information, but the invoices, we're going to wait till January, the budget starts. And so I was very pleased to have, to see all of those necessary changes and introductions at the Sheriff's Office. We're still waiting for information in regards with the jail gate. I will not cover this in detail with that at the moment, but we'll keep you posted on that. Moving forward, last week I had the meeting with the Medical Examiner Investigator. And so they're still in Adrian, although in Jackson County, they've taken over with the morgue department, transferred. Couple of interesting things were discussed. One of the important things that we've been looking at, we've got during this entire whole COVID-19 lockdown, we've had two issues constantly that we've been battling with. And with the Medical Examiner Investigator, we get those reports as one is the drug deaths. Those have gone up high, and the suicides have gone up high. Dr. Cassin, he mentioned about a couple of things that 2020 stands out, has been standing out historically as it relates with issues currently that we're dealing with. Couple of things that were talked about that, you know, it's interesting to bring it back to our taxpayers, our Board of Commissioners, and what they utilize. A couple of things they talked about was photography, and at length it was discussed as to why something of that sort is discussed, is emphasized, is to preserve scenes. And a couple of new things that they've introduced is they've used iPads just because it takes a little larger picture transmitting the details for routine items. There was some more discussion as it relates with, that interest Hillsdale County talks about a little bit of what they're looking at in detail with the issues, drug deaths and suicide, which have been high. One thing was talked about was lividity. And just simply what it means, and I tried to understand that more in detail for Hillsdale County, is quality or state of being livid or whatever the issues that pertain that we're dealing with, our autopsy bodies. This is just a term that's used quite popularly with the medical examiners, the liver mortis or the hypostasis. And we've seen that quite a bit in regards. And state police and the law enforcement, our Sheriff's Office have worked really closely. So I really highly would like to recognize our law enforcement, which includes Sheriff's Office, of what they contribute to just dealings with the medical examiner team. I always like to remind everybody that the Medical Examiner Investigator, we, in Hillsdale County, we operate slightly different. We have something called MOMs, which is the month of the morgue, or morgue of the month, if I may, and it's referred to as MOMs. We have our funeral homes who are, who dedicatedly take care of, transfer of our bodies, autopsy bodies. And they have even been accepting the decomposed bodies, which was quite an issue earlier, but that's been solved. And we don't have to cover the distance as much as was anticipated. The distance for Hillsdale County to Jackson County where the morgue department has been transferred is the same as what it would take to travel from Hillsdale County to Adrian. Prior to that, Bixby had been dealing and taking care of us as it relates with the morgue department that's been transferred to Elm Road in Jackson. I want to be able to thank specifically today the prosecutors and of course again, law enforcement. They work very closely with Hillsdale County families, and they totally rely on the Medical Examiner Investigator for answers, you know? What we bring is we bring closures to families, which is why I emphasized a little bit earlier on photography. Just call for a good description. Again, photography and all this helps for closures, so we ask all these questions why. So that's why Medical Examiner have been really playing a great role within the Hillsdale County. A couple of cases, I did sit for cases. One of them was homicide. The others, again, we're just dealing with the two uptick like I just mentioned earlier. So those were a couple of issues that we've had, and we went at length in discussion with the Adrian office the other day. And yesterday we had Pittsburgh township meeting they met. And so otherwise, if there's any other question in regards with whatever I've covered today, I'd be happy to answer. But I would like to also ask Sheriff who's present here if he has anything, any updates in regard that he'd like to share or any info. I'd like to give him that chance. Sheriff, would you care for any info? Did you have any info today, or would you like to say anything at all?
Come on up, come on up, Sheriff.
Ruth wants to put you in the hats.
There you go.
Thanks, Ruth.
Wow, you've been like, you want, you're doing a good job. You need to come up. There you go.
Just remember, Sheriff, if you can't get in trouble, it's what you don't say.
That's right. Thank you for this opportunity. Working with Namara has been a pleasure for the Sheriff's Office. She keeps us well informed. Apologize about the October report that hasn't been done yet. You'll get that soon. We're trying to work on a few grants for the department, so it's no money out of the taxpayer's pocket. And I'm trying to get the grants that are 100% funded, so again, it doesn't have to come out of the taxpayer's pocket. I'll be applying for new tasers, the good tasers. The ones that we carry now are outdated and unreplaceable, so I look forward to that. We're also looking at body cameras, so roughly $600 apiece for the body cameras. I'll be applying for a grant for those as well. So we're doing our part to try to save the taxpayers money, trying to cut our budget down as much as we possibly can. I think that's about it for the new news. We're moving forward with hiring a few deputies that we are lacking. We are not ever going to do away with a shift due to manpower, so we'll always have coverage out there 24/7. Any questions for me?
I have a question. Whatever came back from Folk, remember when you sent that letter to Folk? What did Folk say?
I think Mr. Wiley has that answer, but they only charged like $4,000. It was approved at, charged $7,000, and they only charged us $4,000 something. That patient needs to come off.
Yep.
I like the idea of possibly going up with metal tin. I think that'll make the front of that facade look great. And it's cheap, and it lasts for years upon years upon years versus the silicone and the breaking setting on now.
I think we just got that information yesterday, wasn't it?
Yep, yep.
So, yeah, I haven't had a chance to send it out. I think one of the comments in there, if I recall correctly, Sheriff, was that they wanted to meet with you and I and Jason. So, and so once we meet, we'll have a better feel for what their entire proposal is.
Absolutely.
But, so, yeah, so that's hot off the press. I mean, we just got that yesterday.
It's hotter than our October...
Ruth, you had a question?
Yeah. Derek sends you a couple of different emails on some issues, asking, trying to get a response from you in terms of different grants you still want to apply to the budget. Have you responded to him yet?
I have.
Okay.
The one was about the burn jag.
Yes.
Yes, I reached out to the Michigan State Police. They sent me to a gentleman that handles the burn jag grants. It's only for like $1,000, but I mean, it's still something from Marine Patrol. So I sent him what I had from last year, because this is all new to us.
Right.
So I sent to him what we had last year, and he's going to work on that for us.
So where are we at, Sheriff, with protective vests?
Absolutely. So we received, we were granted a grant, we haven't received it yet, for all new BDUs and the outer vest carriers. Part of that grant that I was talking earlier about is to get the metal plates for the vest. One that'll take a 223 round and nine millimeter, and it's a rifle round the 223 is. So we're in the process of getting quotes for that as well. I want to have it in before January 1st, so that way when January 1st takes over, we can have the new gear set.
Will all that go under the grant?
Yes.
Okay, and the older ones, and I had this question asked of me at the township, which is I'm asking you, the older vests, are you going to pass those on to the, what, the mummied deputies?
I believe they have the problem, Mr. Caswell, is they expire within five years. So, I mean, they have a shelf life. And with the plates that we're going to get, they have a shelf life, but they're easy, you don't have to throw the whole vest away. You take the plate out, put your new plate in. So it'll be a lot more economical and feasible to have this vest carrier. That way, yeah, what we plan on doing is we donated a couple to the criminal justice program, to Mr. Duff's class, through the ISD, so the kids wear a vest, they get the feeling of the vest in. And they're not totally expired. They've probably got a year or two left on them, but it's a couple that we had extra for them. Thank you. You're welcome, sir.
I feel like, you correct me if I'm wrong.
You're wrong. Oh, I'm sorry.
I feel like you're new, and you, there's a lot of things that you want to do, and you want to get going and everything else, and you can't do everything all at once.
Correct.
Is a dog in the picture? At one point you said you were...
Absolutely, absolutely. We were granted the grant we haven't got, we haven't received it yet. The grant is going to pay for the dog, the dog's training, and the deputy's training. So it's not going to be out of the county budget to have this dog trained. That dog will live with the deputy for the entire lifespan of the dog. That dog will live with the deputy for the entire lifespan of the dog. We do give a, we do give the deputy an hour a week to train the dog, to work with the dog. That's part of his salary. But yeah, it's going to be a great program. We're going to have a dog in Hillsdale County. Victims, Victims Unit has two really good dogs. They're hound dogs that can pick up a scent like that, which we'll use for missing or missing persons in woods or whatever. I did get the opportunity to meet those dogs two weekends ago, so. Yep.
It's great, yeah.
Well, Sam, I can't speak for anybody else, but I can speak for myself.
Speak for them all, Ruth.
I want you to know how much I appreciate all of the people that you have working for you out at the jail.
Well, thank you.
And the deputies, they do, in this day and age, it's work that we're not always patting on the back and told what great people they are, but they are.
Right.
They do a great job, they work hard, and I appreciate them.
I appreciate you guys.
And I bet when you get into budget things, you know, you talk money, it's, my dad always said, if you really want to get notes on somebody, take money out of the pocket.
That's right.
Give them. But I understand all that, but I don't want that to detract from the fact that you guys do a really good job.
Well, thank you. We are very proactive on the COVID-19 testing. We've tested 73 inmates. Of course, they, they have to volunteer to be tested. We've tested 73 inmates, most of our staff. Our mechanic did come down with COVID-19. By the time he was tested and all, in the 14, 10 days or whatever, he was completely off work. We had one of our deputies take a couple inmates down, sanitize the entire garage area and all the vehicles that were sitting inside that he may have touched. So he's back to work. Health department said, yep, you're good to go, so he's back to work.
Good. And he's doing okay?
He's doing great.
No lingering after effects?
Nope, nope, he said he feels great. Good.
Thank you Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you Sheriff.
So yes, we've been really very positive about all the communications within the sheriff's office and the maintenance and vice versa, and the communication with the commissioners and the sheriff's office has been phenomenal. So really I would like to appreciate him and the team. And one thing, one very remarkable that I'd like to say is that this is a good administration that's been working really well with the entire whole team, whether it's the deputies and all the union, everybody. There's this communication happening, just very positive, very encouraging, and that's exactly what our deputies are always in need of, that encouragement. And so that is what, which I witnessed and I am extremely pleased with the new administration with the sheriff's office. Moving forward, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, commissioners, if you have.
Any questions for?
I think you're going to run it.
Oh, thank you Ruth, appreciate it Commissioner.
Okay, thank you for all that. Ruth, I'll bring this up to you.
Okay, this resolution 20099, this emanated from our budget discussions downstairs with Ruth and Derek and myself. And it says, to the annual board of commissioners, we recommend adoption of following resolution. Whereas resolution 04052, and that's a resolution that was approved back in 2004, and it was the 52nd resolution, sets forth a fee distribution for all revenues generated by the reasonable fees paid by commercial users to the county in accordance with Hillsdale County's enhanced access to public records policy. And whereas this same resolution allocates the revenues generated as follows, 25% is refunded to the local units of government on their equalization bill every year. 25% comes to the county, we put it into the general fund. 25% of these monies go to a flyover escrow fund, and we do a flyover about every 10 years. And 25% goes to the mapping office and the GIS program. Whereas funds to support the county's GIS program can no longer depend solely on the 25% allocated to the GIS program as set forth in this resolution 04052. Now therefore be resolved that a request be made, and I want to emphasize a request, be made to all of the townships and cities, asking them to forego the 25% allocated to them and that portion be reallocated to the GIS program effective January 1, 2021, for each township and city approving your request by resolution of the respective board of council. May it further resolve that for each township and city that approves to forego their 25% share of the revenue generated, the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners will reallocate their matching 25% share allocated to the county general fund and distribute it to the GIS program effective January 1, 2021. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Caswell. I move for the adoption of this resolution so we can talk about it. Start. Okay. Back 16 years ago, 20 years ago, when the GIS system was set up, Nick was still around at that time, and all this I'm telling you is what Nick told me filtered through my feeble brain, so I'll give it my best shot. Back when that was done, this distribution schedule was set up. And it was set up because there was some pushback at that time that the fees that were paid, that people had to pay to access all this information, okay, that the county shouldn't get all that money. The GIS system is basically a computerized system that provides information that people can go to and they can see the maps of any area of the county, they can see the bedlands that are there, they can see Matt is working on putting drains on. Nick is in charge of this whole website and he keeps it updated, adds new information as it becomes available and so on. And he's paid a stipend of 7,500. And I can tell you that 7,500 in today's world for a computer site like this, keeping it up and maintaining it and everything else is pretty darn cheap, dirt cheap. The county put in about 75,000 bucks back when this all started. And part of it was spent to get it all going, but then the rest of it is set there and over the years has been used to fund this GIS system. Well, this next year, 2021, will be the last year there's any money left in that. So there's no more money for it. So that's the reason that I'm bringing this forward to you, to ask, to change how this money is allocated. Now for the townships and cities, Nick indicated to me that they get about 150 bucks apiece back on this. The county gets, he said he thought it was around $4,000, maybe a little bit less than that. So what we're asking is that if the townships and cities are willing to give up their 150 bucks, give or take, the county will give up their amount going into it as well, and it will all be allocated to go into the GIS fund. That will give us somewhere around the neighborhood of 7,508,000 dollars. And with the other 25% that's already being put in there, it gives us 12,000 bucks every year, and that's enough to continue this program on, keep it updated, make it usable. Real estate agents use it, a lot of people use it in order to get information on the county. So that's what this whole thing is about. So what questions do you have that hopefully I can answer? Yes?
So the fee, is there any fee, specific amount of fee that a township?
Is there any fees what?
Will the, will the townships pay some amount of fee in this?
Will they pay any money?
Fees.
No, this, this, if, if any entity accesses this website, there is a fee involved in it. I think he told me there's a nickel is where it all comes from. So if they access it, yes, they'll pay a nickel, but they're paying a nickel now. This takes the money that they're getting refunded from these fees that are collected now, it takes that money and is asking the townships, rather than you taking it, will you put it back into the GIS fund? And if you do, we will put our money back into the GIS fund.
Yeah, so that's.
There's not any new fees.
Do you know what the amount would be roughly for each township?
Yes, 150 dollars.
150? And is it monthly or yearly?
Well, what?
Is it monthly?
No, yearly.
Yearly.
Now, at the risk of being slammed and hated and run out of town on rail, 150 bucks for a year is not what you call a whole lot of money anymore. It was pretty significant back when it started, but, and it's about like our 4,000. Our 4,000 was into general fund, so it's going to be gone from now, we won't have that anymore. But if we put all the money into this thing, so it's there and the money's going there and it's protected, then this program can continue on. And it's used a lot. And Nick does a good job with it, and he works very cheap.
So Ruth, in the resolution, there's a request to be made to all townships and cities asking them to forego.
Yep.
Is there going to be a letter sent to them or a copy of this resolution with the letter?
I would say probably there should be a copy of this resolution along with just a brief letter, are you willing to forego your, your 25%?
So who's going to facilitate that?
I can do it if you want.
Should it be Nick?
It can come, it could come, well, Nick's pretty busy right now. He's pumping out tax bills, sorry to say, okay? But he's pumping out tax bills like crazy, he's pretty busy, so I don't know that he'd have a whole lot of time to, but he could, I could go ask him.
Wait, I think, I think my personal opinion is it should be Nick. I think you should ask him because the townships have a relationship with Nick, a really good relationship with Nick, and I think, that's just my opinion, I think it should come from Nick.
So another thing is, so how long are we going to go with this? I know for 2021, you said there's no more money for it. So if we were to have this resolution passed today?
If it passes today, this will be how the monies are allocated into the future.
Okay, does it have, is it like a contract or is it to a timeframe, like for a couple of five years or, how long is this going to be? It's a continuation, okay? Never ending?
This only lasted for 16 years.
Okay.
This can go 20 years, it can go 50 years, it can go 10 years. And the county board of commissioners may come back and want to change it down the road. This takes care of the problem that we've got, is funding this program and keeping it going, because a lot of people depend on this software program, this website.
So 150 per township?
How many what?
Per year. Per year, 150?
Right.
Yes.
That's money, now Ruth. That's money they're already receiving, we're just asking them, rather than take it, they basically allow it to go into the GIS fund. So it's, it's not they're going to pay it, they're just not going to accept it from the, from the GIS funds. It's going to go right back into the operation of the GIS.
Yes, yes, just trying to understand it better also for our taxpayers.
Well, I guess the only, you know, if you'll follow up with Nick, because there's got to be, you know, passing resolutions, one thing, but if we don't send the resolution out with a letter, then.
Yep, we'll get her out.
Yep.
One way or the other. I'll ask Nick to do it first.
Okay.
In fact, if it works, then I'll get Ruth and we can do it together. I didn't know she'd pick up on that or not.
You're wasting my paying attention, aren't you?
Okay. Any further discussion on 20-099? All those in favor signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes, please continue.
Okay, the next thing up is from Kim Berger. Kim is in charge of the Indigent Defense, what do you want to call it, Commission here in the county. And she's got her year ending, now her year ending is at the end of September 30th because it agrees with the, it agrees with the state budget. And we put together a budget last year that Kim prepared and we approved for 495,000. Of that 495,000, we actually ended up spending 426,000. Now, she sent over a listing, and there's various reasons for this, but first of all, remember that there's our share, the local share, and there's the state share. Keep those two pots of money separate. Okay, in our share, we ended up spending about 19,500 dollars less than what we'd anticipated, and that had to do with the corrections with the fringe benefits. And I think that's because you didn't get the guy hired right away. Is that correct, Jason?
That's correct. They weren't hired until December.
Okay, so that, the full expense will be there next year, but for this year, our local share, we underspent by 19,000 for that reason, okay? Now, the state undershare, underfunding, came from a couple different places. First of all, they have what they call conflict attorneys. You get into the legal world and it's interesting, but if an attorney, if you have a family that's appearing before court and they've got, this person is accusing this person of something with this person, they all get different lawyers, okay? And we have attorneys on task, but sometimes we don't have enough to handle all the people that got to have attorneys. So those are called conflict attorneys and they get hired. Every year you estimate how much you're going to spend on these conflict attorneys. And it's a, it's a wag. I mean, it is a wag, you're just guessing, because you have no idea. This year, we underspent the conflict attorneys by about 14,000, okay? And that, that goes, that's the state share, that's the state that was paying for that. Okay, secondly, we have a line up in the budget for experts and witnesses, okay? So if you have jury trials and somebody does something and you want to bring in an expert or a witness and they get big bucks, and again, you're guessing at how much you're going to spend, we allocated the budget 10,500. Well, we had, as you know, very few jury trials this year because of COVID. So there was no money spent out of the expert witnesses line. So that 10,500 is underspent by that amount, and that's a state share. The other, another one is the construction of the conference room, the construction of the circuit court conference room. We stuck that little word in there so the defense attorney could take their person right in there and confer with them privately, which we're required to do under state law. We had allocated 7,500 for that and we only spent about 2,700. So that was done for 4,800 less, okay? So that's, that's state money. Then we had the construction out at the jail. The construction at the jail, we estimated was going to cost 61,000, and it ended up actually costing a little bit under 46,000. So there's about 15,000 savings there that goes back to the state. And then finally, all of the travel, the training, the membership and all that stuff, because of COVID, nobody had any training anywhere that was required, any kind of travel or any of that sort of thing. We had put in about 5,700 for that and we ended up spending 773. So there's a 4900 savings there. The bottom line is that at the end of the budget year, the local share, we're 19,500 ahead. The state is 49,000 ahead. Now that 19,500 will come back to us, the 49,000, I believe is going to go back to the state. I don't think we can lapse it over. Kim was looking into that, okay? But I don't think we can. So that's why we had a surplus, okay? And the monies are going back, and Kim did an excellent job in explaining all this and getting the budgets put together and getting everything into the state. She has really grown a great amount in handling this job and doing the process. So I just wanted to explain all that to you so that you know. Are there any questions?
I have a question. You know, the conference circuit room that was created, that was made, that money was 100% covered from the Indigent Defense Grant?
Correct.
You remember that bathroom that was converted to that circuit room, conference room? Did you mention that Indigent Defense Grant covered that 100%?
The bathroom that was converted to the conference room. She's talking about the conference room that was paid for through Indigent Defense.
I don't know that that bathroom's been converted yet.
It is.
Is it?
It is, yes it is.
Okay, well, that, that was all part of this.
Was it covered 100%?
Yeah.
That's what she's asking, whether it was covered 100%.
Well, you can't say anything is covered 100% by the state, because we are required to put in the same amount of money we were spending when all this Indigent Defense stuff started. The state then adds to that. So you've got one pot of money, okay? The only thing, and it's, once you got that pot of money, Kim has to specify this money's going out of our local share to pay for things, this money's coming out of the state share to pay for things. And how she allocates that, quite frankly, doesn't make too much difference, but we have to spend the same percentage, and this gets confusing, the same percentage on the projects that we were spending originally. So if our local share is 30% of the total budget, then we have to spend 30% on each of the projects, that much has to be allocated out so that the state is happy, okay? The bottom line when you're done this year is what I'm saying, is our, our share that we're getting back is 19,500. The state share they're getting back is 49,000. So. we're getting back is 49,000. So that's how the state requires it to be done.
That's good.
And if that's confusing as mud, welcome to the green light and power.
No, it's not confusing. I've known about it. We've, we've sat and discussed this prior, the former sheriff, and so we know this was on the going, so. My questions are just legitimate for the taxpayers. Thanks, Bruce.
Okay. All right. Next up. We've got a fifth standard for the Indigent Defense process, and we already have it in our county, we already have it in place. And the standard says that judges cannot appoint defense attorneys for indigent people. We've never done that in Hillsdale County, but it was a common practice in other counties. And this standard is now saying, judges cannot do it anymore. They want complete and separate autonomy between the judge and the defense attorney. They don't want any connection, that there's any kind of shenanigans going on between the two. So the people that will appoint these defense attorneys in the future is the, uh, public defender administrator in each county. That will be the person that appoints all the judges. In our case, it's Kim, okay? Other, other counties have different systems, but it will not be a judge. So that's the fifth standard. We started off with this a couple of years ago with three standards to start with, and we've now added the two more. Okay, next up. We approved, Mr. Chairman, and I may be out of line here, if I am, just tell me shut up. Um, we approved a couple of meetings ago to spend X dollars with Foster, Swift and Collins, if you remember, with the whole MERS thing, okay? And I talked to Julie yesterday on this MERS issue that's coming up, and she indicated that we needed to have a, uh, what do I wanna say? A contract with them, okay? And that we didn't have that contract yet. So I'm bringing this to you. It needs to be signed by you, um, and dated. Now, I don't know whether or not you wanna look this over and bring it up the next meeting, whether you wanna do it now. I know it's a surprise, and I'm sorry, but it just happened yesterday late. After I got the MERS thing, I saw it Sunday night, and so I got ahold of her and so on. So look at it over.
I'll look it over.
And it's something that, we may never use them, but if we do wanna use them, that needs to be signed ahead of time, so that they can charge us, okay? And I told her to send me, I said, I understand you're gonna charge me for what I did yesterday, and I told her to send the bill to me, and if you end up deciding not to sign it, that's fine, I'll pay the bill. But if you, if you decide you do wanna sign it, then I'll submit the bill to the county, okay? So handle it any way you want.
I'll look it over and we'll talk it, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask you a question, please?
Please.
Will this be discussed, or will it be provided a copy at least later, uh, before the next meeting to have a look? Because this has suddenly come out.
Yeah. I haven't even seen it, so yeah, so everybody will get it.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, now, this next thing. This has to do, I got this through the mail from Treasury, the uniform assumptions for fiscal year 2021. Every year now, because of state law, the state has to set the uniform assumptions, and again, this is confusing, that we have to report based upon our pension plan, we have to use these assumptions, okay? Now, MERS is running our pension plan. We use different assumptions, they use different assumptions for running the plan. Keep those two separated. This is kinda like the state saying, we want you to report the value of your pension plan based on these assumptions. MERS is saying, this, uh, this is how much money you have to pay into your pension based upon these assumptions. Keep the two separate. But it was interesting, and, and I say that because if you read through the darn thing, and it's, again, about as clear as mud, but the state has indicated, and, and I, you know this, because we've said it before, that there is, we need to assume a 7% investment rate of return. The state's also indicating that the salary increase that we should use to figure out how much is gonna go into the fund down the road, and, and how much people are gonna be able to draw, so based on their salary, should be decreased from 3.5% to 3%. And I think when MERS was down here before, they'd mentioned, I believe, that they've already, that they've already reduced theirs to 3% for salary increases. Uh, there are also, the state is updating the mortality table. Um, we keep living longer, so you're gonna draw more out of the pension, so that table needs to be updated in order to have a clearer picture of how much actually be drawn out of the pension. If you live more years, you're gonna draw more out, just that simple, okay? And then, if you remember, when the state passed this law, they gave us 20 years to get a pension in order, okay? Next year, 2021, that will now be down to eight, will have 18 years left. So the amount that needs to be put in has to, has to be an amount that will get us fully funded in 18 years, okay? We've passed two years by already. Now, here's the interesting part. The state's got more pension funds than Carter's got little liver pills. But these are the investment rates that the pension funds up in Lansing are using. The Michigan Public School Employees Retirement System, the legacy system, that's one of them, is using 6.8%, not 7. The Michigan Public School Employees Retirement System Pension Plus is using 6.8%. The Michigan Public School Employees Retirement System Pension Plus Two is using 6% for their investment rate. The Michigan State Employees Retirement System, this is a state employees, is using 6.7. The Michigan State Police Retirement System, the legacy system, is using 6.8. The Michigan State Police Retirement System Pension Plan is using 6.85, and the Michigan Judges Retirement System is using 6 and 1/4, 6.25. My point in bringing this up to you is, MERS is currently at 7.35, and they threw a party about how wonderful they were to bring it down from 7.75. There's not another pension system in the state that's at 7.35. Now, what does that mean for us? What it means is the money that we're putting in, and the employees out at the Sheriff's Department are putting in, MERS is saying it's gonna earn 7.35% going forward. Everybody of these other pension systems saying, no, at best, it's gonna earn 6.85, and there's one, the judges, are earning 6 and 1/4. That is a significant difference in terms of what we've gotta do to fully fund that pension, a significant difference. And I think, again, MERS has moved, but the iceberg moved too, and then the Titanic ran into it. And I think MERS has gotta understand that they gotta get in the real world fairly quick. Now, I understand why they're not doing it, because politically, all over the state, it's not just here, all over the state, these pension funds are underfunded because of what MERS has instructed people to do. But 7.35 is not reality, and if we don't get that straightened out, um, you know, we can sit here and put together a plan that says, oh, everything's gonna be fine, but it won't be fine, because we won't be earning 7.35% on our investments. So I, I brought this to you, and if, if you wanna see it, you can, you can have it. Um, it's got quite a bit of interesting stuff in it, but the salary increase, where the state's saying use 3%, MECSERS, which is the Teachers Retirement Plan, and SERES, which is the State Employees Retirement Plan, are using a 2.75% increase, not 3. And a quarter of a percent doesn't sound like much, but over the extension of 30 years, okay, it makes a huge difference. Now, that particular piece, by having a lower salary increase, decreases the amount of money you're taking out of pension, because you don't have as big a number. That helps the pension, okay? Well, MERS is off on that as well. So if they get everything adjusted, I think it would be better. And, and I sat in on a, I sat in on a webinar with MERS. There were three people on the webinar, all over the state, okay? I tell you how weird I am, all right? But basically, I said to Kelly, who's the new boss up there, I said, "Look, Kelly, with the computers we have today, there is no reason why you can't pinpoint your assumptions to each individual unit. They use one overarching set of assumptions for the entire state, and, and that is not reality, okay? We don't get the raises out here that people are getting in open county. It's two different worlds, and they should recognize that, and they can recognize it if they do it." With the computers, like I say, that we have today, and the way we can process data, they can do it very easily. She said she would look into it, okay? Kinda sounds like me with my kids, okay? Yeah, I'll look into it some. But they, they could do so much better than they're doing, but they won't, they won't budge. So I don't know where it's gonna go. You know how I feel on it. I wanna protect our, our deputies and so on, but the window is closing. We've got 18 years left now, not 20, and it has to be taken care of. So it won't be this commissioner taking care of it, it's gonna be people down the road maybe, but it has to be taken care of, and we can't keep whistling past the graveyard here, because things aren't gonna get any better. Okay, finally, um, I wanted to mention, oh, not finally, sorry. We got, we got a chargeback rate from the state. The kids that we end up having to take care of, because their families are so messed up, these are kids that maybe were born to a alcoholic mother, or a drug mother, and they're, they're messed up, their nervous system's messed up from the get-go. Uh, these are kids that are sexually abused, these are kids that are physically abused. The kids that are the worst of the worst, and really need a lot of help, okay, end up going to state facilities. And the state has come back and said that their rates for this next year, for, for these kids, are gonna be $310 a day. Now, for those of you that don't do math, that comes out for $113,000 a year. That's what it costs to give these kids the support and the help they need to try to get their lives turned around. And I say this simply because too often, we sit back and say, well, that's none of my business, what's going on there? Well, it is your business, because you're paying for it. And these kids, some of them are really messed up, and they need a lot of help. And many of them, we can deal with here locally. Some of them can go in the youth home. We've got some that are going over to Lenawee County to a, a higher facility, but not as expensive as the state. And we've cut, Lenawee County has been very gracious to us in taking these kids. But you get one kid that has to go into a state facility, and our share of that is half, that's $56,000 a year that we've gotta spend, okay? Now, that money comes out of the Child Care Fund. I'll bear with me here. This past year, a year ago, we put together a budget, and that budget, we had to find a half million dollars, if you remember, to pay off the workers' comp bill for Deputy Ludiger, okay? And we raided quite a few funds, and didn't put money into funds. One of them was the Child Care Fund. And I know that, well, I don't know, but I would assume there's people out there in TV land that are saying, well, if you could find a half million dollars, then what's the deal? Well, what we did was we stripped a lot of these funds down. Now, the money we've received this year from COVID, from the federal government and the state, we're gonna end up about a half million ahead. And Ruth and I and Derek have talked about this, and we're gonna take this money this year, and we're gonna rebuild those funds that we took the money out of, with that COVID money. So the half million that we got through this whole COVID mess is basically canceling out the half million that we had to steal from all these funds to pay for this, okay? And that half million will replenish the Child Care Fund, so that we don't have to, I'd have been on pins and needles the whole year, because if we got one kid like this, we'd have been in the world of hurt. They'll get money back in there, so that we'll be protected in that regard, okay? So that part is good. There's a couple other funds that we're also replenishing. Um, one of them is the grant that we get for Judge Bianchi. She has a family court program, and we have a requirement every year to put 20,000 into that as our local match, okay? The budget that we put together for this year, we put in five, because there was some surplus in there, and there would have been nothing in there at the end of the year. So we're replenishing that as well, and putting some money back in there. So to the general public, you know, the comment, and I'm sure that people have thought about this, well, if you could find a half million to, to do, take care of Deputy Ludiger, then you got all the money you need. Well, we stripped everything to the walls, and because of COVID, and everything the federal government has doled out money-wise, we, we're gonna be able to replenish those things. So at the end of the year, about even Steven, okay? Now, next year, we're talking about doing some things with the windmill money that'll be coming to the county. Well, Nick pointed out to me the other day, he says he doesn't think it'll happen, but if they don't have that windmill farm finished up by the end of the year, then they can report it as construction in progress, and the amount of tax money we would receive would plummet, okay? And there's no way of knowing what's gonna happen in that regard. I break this up to you, because we're gonna be voting on some things in the future, and you need to think about this, okay? You need to be aware of it. If we get that money, that money is allowing us to do some of the things we're talking about with the pension, and with the heating system, and so on and so forth. So just keep all that in mind going ahead. Um, quite often, people think there's a lot of shenanigans that go on with budgets, and if there's one thing that I can say about budgets I put together, there's no shenanigans. Okay, the final thing that I wanna mention. I asked a question yesterday on the LifeWays meeting that Ruth talked about, and there was discussion about, uh, this had to do with quality improvement and credentialing. We've lost, Shannon Clevinger indicated that we've had two, at least two people appear at the emergency room in Hillsdale. They're mentally, they're mentally ill, uh, they're seriously ill and need help, and in order to get them help, you have to transport them from the hospital to whatever home they can find around the state, whatever facility they can find to get these people the help they need. We've lost two beds. We found beds for two people in different places, and they didn't get there because they were not transported, okay, from the hospital to those facilities. Apparently, the, the, uh, hospital is looking into, uh, doing something with an entity to make sure that the transportation is available. Now, the reason I bring this up to you is, we have two pots of money that the voters of this county have approved. One pot of money goes to the ambulance services, the other pot of money goes into the mental health fund. One of the objections early on, I'd been told, was from the ambulance folks, who said, "Look, when we take these people and we transport them six hours away, it's an all-day deal, because we have to stay there until the people are admitted, and we don't get paid anything for Medicaid to speak of, and it's, it's a real loser for us." The, uh, mental health fund, it was offered to replace that money, or to put more money in, so that they didn't lose, uh, lose all that money, which was understandable. They can't stay open if they're losing money. Um, that was approved and could be done, uh, but that, I don't, I don't set in the negotiations, but that still didn't, uh, get the ball of wax rolling. So the hospital was looking at something private. So we have a couple of choices as commissioners, as I look at it. One, we can allocate some of the mental health money to transportation for these folks to other facilities around the state. We could do that. Uh, two, is we could go in and we could take some of the, allocate some of the ambulance money to this other entity, uh, to get these people transported. We gotta do something.
But that's not what the millage passed for the ambulance fund.
You would never dream in a million years, somebody that needs to be transported for cancer, to not transport them.
But the millage that was passed for the ambulance, I, I, the millage that was passed for the ambulance fund, I don't think that money can be put towards transportation for anything other than emergency.
It, it's, can be used for anything concerning mental health.
Is that what it says in the contract, sir?
It's for mental health.
The mental, the mental health one is for mental health. She said ambulance. You're talking about the ambulance.
Yes, because that's what he said.
Mental health money's not gonna go to the ambulance.
No, she's talking about the ambulance.
The mental health money would go towards helping to fund this entity that will be transporting these people. So in other words, if you take somebody, pick them up in Hillsdale and take them up to, give them up to, the mental health money could help pay for that transport. the mental health money could help pay for that transport.
So now, you're asking about,
it's answered, it's answered.
The ambulance money, if it can be used for non-emergencies. Right?
I know that answer. And I just got the answer from him. I was waiting for him to say that. But that's okay. You can go on.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're clear because we're talking about two different, the mental health money and the ambulance money.
Well, something we're going to want to think about and I, maybe we don't want to do anything. Just leave it the way it is. I'm not comfortable with that because I think these people, when they're in that kind of state, need to get where they can get help. So I'm going to advocate for one of the two solutions. I throw this out simply to let you guys think about it and decide if you want to do anything and if you do want to do something, what you want to do. And Medicaid pays very little for transports. I'm not going to deny that. So think it through and we can have other conversations. That's it. That's enough, isn't it?
Ruth was timing you.
We've got 40 minutes. That's not much today.
Three more meetings, Ruth, and I'll be done.
Well, we might, we might have to do a special one just so she's got one more for us. All right. Any other questions or comments for Ruth? Okay. Making a note here. Okay. I'll read, I gotta go back to where I was at here. I'll read 20-100 so we can get it on the table so that Jason can help answer questions on the addendum that was sent to all of you on MERS.
I don't have the addendum.
Where did you go?
Nope.
Well, guess what? That train joke happened.
You are awesome. I'm not sure what other people say.
I get that a lot at home, too. All right. Now that we've lightened the mood. 20-100 to the Honorable Board of Commissioners. We, the Board of Commissioners, authorize Murphy Wiley, Chairman, to sign the Michigan Employees Retirement System of Michigan, better known as MERS, define benefit, plan, adoption agreement, addendum. Respectfully submitted. Move for adoption. Do I have a sport?
I have a second thought.
Thank you. Jason, why don't you come up to the podium, please, so you can help answer questions? Because I believe, if I'm not mistaken, you filled this out.
I did, yes.
And so this is an addendum to the original contract. Correct?
Correct. Well, my understanding is from MERS is that we never had anything officially in writing that spelled out how our plan works. Generally, whenever there was a question, they would say, refer to the municipality for any questions. So this actually spells out how our current plan actually works. I didn't know if you want to go through it bullet by bullet or not.
I mean, I think you can skip the first one, but I think.
So some plans, when they're adopted, voter-elected officials can be in the plans, appointed officials can be in the plans. When our plan was set up, it was specifically for the sheriff's office, the deputies and the supervisors. Deputies as dispatchers and whatnot. So again, when I filled it out, I put on here that it's for public safety employees. And I put in here that, you know, temporary employees are not part of it. Part-time employees are not part of it. Seasonal employees, voter-elected officials, appointed officials, and contact employees. Again, it's how we do it now. You can see there's a section here on probationary periods. Some places have it set up where you can't get in the retirement system for a certain amount of years for probation. Ours starts the first day you're hired. So again, that's what I marked on this one. The fourth provision, it spells out how many days you have to work to get credit for MERS. When ours was set up, we have, you have to work 10 eight-hour days in a month to get credit with MERS. So again, the places that have part-time employees, if they're only working five days, they can't get credit for their agency for MERS. So I just filled in that eighty hours a month is what you have to work to get credit in MERS for the month. They have in here leads of absences. So if someone's off on workers' compensation or FMLA, short-term, long-term disability, as long as that employee pays their portion of what they owe MERS, they'll get credit for that month in the MERS system, which is how we've been doing it now. And then number three here, compensation. They have different, they have different predefined ways that you can pay for your MERS compensation. We didn't fall any under the predefined boxes. We kind of had to go to the custom. Some agencies, only your regular hours are used to determine your retirement. When ours were set, when ours was set up, we use basically your regular wages, your overtime wages. There are some things that are excluded. I believe for the contract, the employees get a cleaning allowance and some other allowances that are not used to determine your final average compensation in MERS. So you don't pay MERS on the cleaning allowance so that it's not used as your, as income. And that is pretty much it. Again, part of this is it has to be discussed at a board meeting and then the minutes provided to MERS to officially put this in our file. So did we have any questions? Hopefully, I can answer. We did have a conference call with Stephanie, Derek, Carol, Beth, myself and MERS. And we tried to go through this and ask as many questions as we could.
So when, when's the final date that this needs to be submitted by?
Well, they provided a e-signature document that they need back by November 20th. If we needed to extend that, I think they said that they could send a new document. But so if we need to discuss it further.
Well, the reason I ask that, Jason, is because I asked Marnie to dig through the files. And she sent a bunch of stuff out to all of us last night or late in the day yesterday. And it goes back to when this was originally started.
Okay.
And.
Well, that would have been nice to see before I filled this out. See if I did it correctly.
And I think, and there again, I'll be happy to forward this to you so that we can all look at it. You know, this goes back when Ken Leitnhauser signed it on July 27, 1999.
Right.
So I think, at least my feeling is, is that we need to look at this, these documents that Marnie sent out to us last night or yesterday and look this over and have a little more time to review it. At least that's my take on it.
Right.
Questions or?
Well, when I got, when I saw this, then I called Julie Hamlin up at Foster Swift. And I said, what is this and so on? And I talked to her very briefly and very quickly. And the only thing, and again, she didn't see any of the stuff that we did 20 years ago. The only thing she brought up was where she said it says lump sum payments. If we, and this is on page five, it's not checked either yes or no, at least on the document I've got here. And she said, if you check, check yes, then it's going to cost the, it's going to cost everybody a lot more money because all of these things would be considered part of your retirement, money that you're taking in. If you check no and exclude these things, then it wouldn't be. But I think with what you did in terms of getting Marnie's stuff and sending it to us, I think we need to send all this up to them. They're the lawyers. We're not. Have them look at it, look at our old documents and compare the two. I, if we're going to do it, we might as well do it right. That'd be my feeling.
Well, we definitely want it done right. I mean, for everyone concerned. And I guess with that comment about the lump sum, shouldn't we have one or the other checked?
I would have, yes. One of them should be lumped. And I think it's actually yes. I'd have to double-check with Carol. But I think they've been taking, I think they've been taking MERS out of our longevity. I'd have, I'd have to double-check on that one. We don't get bonuses or merit pay. You can, I suppose you can give me a separate package if you'd like. I don't know if anybody's got a severance package. Moving expenses. Yeah, we just, a lot of these things aren't a part of our order design for, but.
Right.
It's not public safety, that's for sure. But yeah, I must have mistaken or missed that part, obviously. So.
Well, I just sent you.
If we want to.
I just sent you those documents that Marnie had sent us.
Okay. I don't know if you want to schedule a time to meet and we go through all this with those documents? Or?
One day next week would probably be good.
Okay.
I guess, why don't you and I touch base on Monday? I don't see any harm in sending this up to Julie.
Well, if you said yes, you should send the other stuff, too, that Marnie gave us. So they've.
Right, right.
Anything in the past.
Right.
We're talking, we're talking a lot of money here and rallying the whole with pension. We know that. I just want to make sure it's come right, whatever we do.
Yeah, we just need to make sure we set up how we're currently doing it. And then again, this is subject to change. You know, during negotiations, if we decide to do something different. Like I said, some entities only, only include base wages and their retirement. All those things can be changed. And we just do another addendum. This isn't, this isn't tying us to anything. It's just filling out to what we're doing currently.
Well, I think we can get it done on the 24th, especially if, you know, you and I sit down next week. I'll just need to, the voter needed to table it or withdraw it. I guess I'd be more inclined to withdraw if the supporter is acceptable. Who supported that?
I support, I would draw my support.
Okay. We'll just withdraw it. It'll be easier to bring it back that way.
Okay.
But reach out to MERS. You mentioned the 20th of November.
Right. And I think that's mostly because, again, they sent an e-document with an authorized signature. And that's only good for a certain amount of time.
Okay.
Since they don't want that stuff sitting out there where anybody can sign it.
Yeah, if you'll reach out to them as far as, explain to them where to take this up on the 24th.
Yeah, I'll make an extension on that.
Yep, good, good.
Okay.
Any other questions while Jason's?
Thank you.
Are you going to meet with them then Monday then?
Yeah, and you're welcome to come along.
All right, thank you, sir. I'd like to appreciate that.
As soon as Jason, I get it set up for next week. We'll, yeah, okay.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Jason.
Real good, thank you.
Appreciate that, Jason.
All right. Yeah, I don't know how long Marnie's spent in the vault looking for those old documents, but she found them.
They were very old. I think they're like, probably 2001 or probably older than that.
Several of them are 1999.
Right, exactly. So I was wondering. A copy? Did you want a copy?
I'm not touching that.
Did you want a copy?
I've got it.
What Marnie sent in.
They're in my office.
Okay, got it, okay.
Okay. Next thing is the discussion of, you should have all received the updated COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan. Doug went through and did the best, I mean, a lot of changes, taken out the EOs.
Yeah, he removed all the EOs.
Removed all of that. Incorporated the language from MDHHS as well as myosia. I think you've all had time to look it over. Is there any questions per se on the new plan?
I know he has removed all the executive orders, all of them. He removed all that language. I looked at like everything. Only the thing is that I think it's Appendix 6, if I'm not mistaken. I can't pull it on my device at the moment. That page 6, I know that, or we call it very well. Oh, I appreciate, is this the one?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. So I know he has removed all the executive orders. Page 6, as I recall. I'm a bit uncomfortable with what this page 6 talks about. And it goes on to talk about workers at supply distribution centers. It has all different points here, all the way. It talks about laundromats, coin laundry, dry cleaners. That is page 6 I'm talking about. But if you look at Appendix A on page 5, that is all coming under that, under critical infrastructure workers. And I am aware he has removed every single executive order, all of those language, which was a lot, a lot of it. So that is my concern here. I think this needs to be re-looked or please suggest what, page 5 and page 6, we come down to giving an understanding of how we can put it to critical infrastructure workers. And that's how I have a problem with where it comes down, And that's how I have a problem with where it comes down, which I had the same problem last time when, May 12th, you know.
If you keep in mind, the very last sentence of that top paragraph on page 5, this only applies to county employees that work or who work in these classifications.
Yeah, and the last bar, he's removed it, which is the executive order of 2020, 42, and 59.
Yeah, but at the top of the page, your last sentence, this only applies to county, because I think what you're looking at is, does it apply to county businesses? No, this applies to county employees that are in these classifications.
Right, and it says clearly in the beginning of page 5, you are correct, when it says this only applies to county employees who work in these classifications.
Right.
So if the county employees, as far as I understand, they are county employees, but further than this job that they have, if they were to have any other job in regards with childcare, or go down to working in insurance industries.
Does, so if they've got two jobs, this only applies to their job as a county employee?
Got it. So why are we putting the page 6, that entitles, which basically gives us a vast description about workers as laundromats, coin laundry, dry cleaners, and workers at hotels, motels, hotels and motels are offered. So why are we adding that? Sorry to confuse you, but it seems like we're only talking about county employees. Why are we further going down the line where we're trying to explain what our insurance industry should be, how they're gonna extend their work and cannot be done by telephone or remotely? That's all on page 6. And I get your point. We're looking at Appendix A 5 and 6. Page 5 and 6, which says, critical infrastructure workers. I'm totally fine with the county employee, that's okay. But we're then going, stretching out, branching out to suppliers, distribution centers, and workers in insurance industry. We're talking about workers in water for business operation, for religious and secular nonprofit. Where did that come from?
Well, now, another thing you've got to keep in mind.
Yes, sir.
Once again, we're working off of a template.
Absolutely, I see that.
And this template works for Little Hillsdale County, or Oakland County, where the supply system is very different from what ours is. Okay? Because they actually have county employees that are working in childcare, or in supply, or whatever.
You mean like a second business, or a second work?
No, I'm talking about within county government.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Because Oakland County is very much different than Hillsdale County. So once again, we're just working off of a template, so don't get hung up on the language. I mean, if we take too much out of the template, do we lose the meaning?
I mean, we're still having, like, all this.
It still covers county employees, go ahead.
Appendix A, I think is where we're at, is that correct?
Correct.
Page 5.
Appendix A simply lists critical infrastructure workers as determined back when this whole mess started by the federal government.
Yep.
Okay? And we went through this before, and when we went through it before, we made the statement that you just made, Mr. Chairman. And if you read the sentence there underneath it, it says, consistent with these guidelines, critical infrastructure workers include some workers in each of the following sectors. So they're just including that there. Then there's a statement that says, this only applies to county employees who work in these classifications. So if you have a county employee, for instance, that works in water and wastewater, there are counties that have wastewater programs. If you have a county employee that works in that program, they are considered to be a critical worker. If you don't have any county employees that work in food and agriculture, then you don't have to worry about it. You don't have any, because this only applies to county employees who work in these particular areas. So the list is inclusive, because it was what the feds came up with when this whole thing started, to say, these are all the critical employees that can continue to keep working, remember when we shut everything down. We clarified to say that this only applies to county employees who work in those classifications. So we don't have any county employees that work in healthcare and public health. Well, we do too, because we got the nurse out into jail. So she would be considered critical. Okay? They get her through life ways anyway. Law enforcement, public safety, first responders, those people are considered critical workers. Okay? We don't have anybody in food and agriculture. So it doesn't apply to us. We don't have anybody in energy, doesn't apply to us, and so on down through. So the list is not a list for Hillsdale County, it's a list for everybody across the country to use, and then your employees who work in whichever of those particular spots, those people are considered to be, are considered to be critical workers. Doesn't have anything to do with that statement, this only applies to county employees. Okay? Doesn't have anything to do with anybody else.
So why can't we have just a five-page worth template, giving us a little description of how we can keep our county employees safe? We have a lot of things that we've added, and all this is added, I'll tell you why. Because this is how we mimic the executive orders in the first place. Just because we've removed the executive orders and that language completely off from the COVID-19 response plan, it still bears a lot of weight, and there's a lot of discomfort with some of the ways going. And if you see, it's never, it's about 14, 15 pages. So I just have a problem with the page. I had the same problem on May 12, 2020. So, but this is good discussion, I appreciate your comments on it. But I still feel that if we're going to have a template, and we're just gonna copy paste, we might have to rephrase a lot of things. This was just, you, all this, when I look at this, I see only the executive orders and the language of the 187-plus orders that were given. Only that language has been removed. But otherwise, the response plan is still the same. Still telling us not to move one inch forward. I just, that's just the only thing. But I appreciate your comments, I really do.
Well, I do know that, you know, at least the copy that's online, that I know, I think anyways, all of you got.
Yes, sir.
You know, the items that Doug inserted are in red. And if you go to the MIOSHA website and look, a lot of this, several of the red items that were inserted are from MIOSHA.
Yes, I know. I did that research yesterday when you were here. Yes, sir, absolutely.
And the same way with MDHHS.
Sure, which is the executive branch of the legislature, that's right, sir. Got it.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to accept this, or what do we?
Well, we have, because we've updated this, I think, twice already. So if we're gonna keep it as a current copy, we should, we should have a motion.
I hope that we accept it.
I'll second.
The reason why I'm making this motion is because I think that this is the same issue that we had. We're not talking about Hillsdale County businesses, or Hillsdale County, we're talking about Hillsdale County government.
Right.
County employees. And Namu is right, this is a template that has been being used ever since the beginning, and Doug has gone back in every time and updated it. And, you know, to me, it's clear. And I don't have a problem with it.
Well, and, you know, just, yes, it's a template, but yes, he's taken time to insert things like on, I think it's page 2, when it talks about personal protective equipment, he's typed in, in addition, glass barriers have been permanently installed in all areas where contact between staff and the public is anticipated. You know, so some things that we have done have been inserted in here as well. So.
I appreciate your comment as well, Commissioner Brown, I appreciate that. My only point is, and I'll tell you that, and I've told that May 20th, sorry, May 12, 2020, I said the same thing then. My only main concern is to have our local economic vitality. So what is happening is, when we're doing this, and certain things, certain pages of appendix, I'm having a severe problem. I am just here to just explain that that really does infringe the civil liberties of the people. And that's okay to have a preparedness plan. As a county, we should. My only point here, of issue here, is when do we stop? When do we start just understanding that this virus is there? It's not a hoax. We're all gonna die one way or the other. I can cross the road and pass away today. But what I'm talking about is, our local businesses are just closing. Just last week, we had one, South Seating. But not to go furthermore on this, I just wanted to make that statement, and I'm stick with that statement. I know there is a motion and support on the floor, and we're happy to, you know, move forward. But that is just what I, I made the same argument back in May, I made the same argument in June. So, but thank you for that opportunity. I appreciate you making your comments.
I respectfully, I respect what she's saying, and I respect that, where she's coming from, and I see your viewpoint, Commissioner Carolyn, I really do. But I respectfully think that it doesn't have anything to do with local business. This preparedness plan doesn't have anything to do with local businesses closing. That's my, that's my viewpoint. It's, this is, this document has to do with county government, and it doesn't infringe on people outside of county government or businesses. So I would respectfully disagree, but I appreciate your, I respect your opinion also, Commissioner Carolyn, and your due diligence.
So Julie Ames mentioned to us that Litchfield City had redone, Litchfield City had redone theirs, and Doug Sanford and I both had a chance to look at Litchfield Cities.
Yeah, they did one, I saw that on paper.
And they've done, they've done a very similar update as Jonesville has as well.
The city or the township?
City of Litchfield.
Got it.
And the city of Jonesville has updated theirs as well. So, you know.
What about the city council, sir? Have they done something like that?
For Hillsdale?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they did. They, they did. They, Hillsdale City cut theirs, cut their plan way down.
Only to one page, I think.
Their, their plan is much, much less. They cut their, their plan. They did pass a plan, but it's much, much less than that one is. They cut a lot of that plan out, and passed a lower plan. What's your, what's your viewpoint on this, Bruce?
I'm okay with it. It's.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, the motion is to accept it, and have the updated version. All those in favor, signify with a say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to one with one exception. Region 2 Planning Commission, we had a discussion on this, what, probably two months ago, whether we should or should not join. We've gotten...
Stephen Duke gave us some, is that the same one, sir?
Somewhere or another, I've got an invoice on that.
Here it is, right here.
You got it?
Yep.
No motion?
Whoops, I'm sorry.
Yep, thank you. So if we join, the dues for the year is $12,605.76. I'll be quite honest, I don't know that we would recoup that money in services and benefits. And I've not been sold on the idea, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I got this stuff about writing a recreation plan for the county. And I also got a copy of the plan that I think Litchfield and Jonesville put together for the trails, so I got that. And once I'm done with this job, after the first of the year, I'm going to make an attempt to write a recreation, a five-year recreation plan for the county. I hope, I hope to have it done, with word of willing, by the end of January, and submit it to the state. And I'll be bringing that back to you. Okay? And then, if it's approved by the state, then we can turn around and apply for grants for the Natural Resources Trust Fund for our parks. I saw Bob Godfrey last night at township meeting, and I told him, and I said, I want to sit down with him and my county separately, and get their ideas separately about what they would like to see improved in the parks. Basically, we're down to one park now, Louis Edmire, what they'd like to see, and so on and so forth, and get their ideas. And that will be incorporated into the plan. So that's where we're at with it, and I'm not gonna charge anything.
That was my next question. I was wondering what the fees would be.
The end product may not be worth a warm bucket of spit, and if it is, then who's ever sitting here next year can join Region 2 next year. But I'm just gonna do it, try to get it done. We've been barking at the Parks Commission for six years, and nothing's happened, so I'll just get off my dead hide-in, and I'll try to do it, and see if we get it accomplished.
Go ahead.
My feeling on this is, you know, I've said this before, we've talked about this before. I was on the Planning Commission for five years with Brad, and I, I was the secretary. And this is premature, because the Planning Commission ordinance sunsets, we wrote it when I was on, and it sunsets in July of '21. So at that point, I think the current Planning Commission has to make a decision, just like we did five years ago, whether they want to rewrite another ordinance for another five years, and bring it to the commissioners, or whether they want to go to Region 2, or what they want to do. We did this all five years ago, it's over five years. And I think that it needs to come from the Planning Commission. If they come up in front of us and say, you know, we want to rewrite this ordinance, and we want to do this for another five years, or we don't, we want to do Region 2, needs to come from the Planning Commission. So I think this is, this is premature. I don't think this is anything that commissioners should be deciding on now.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. First question I wanted to just ask you really quickly. So how did this Region 2 invoice come, so we?
Oh, it comes every year.
Oh, it comes every year, okay, got it.
Oh, yeah. They've, they've been trying to get us to join.
Oh, sure, of course, for a long time. My only other issue here is, we had also brought in a proposal from Michigan Extension. And I personally don't feel why, as county Planning Commission, we can't have a planning commission at a minimum budget, I understand. We're not, I understand this $12,000 per year would, would be a lot for the, for our board. But Michigan, Michigan Extension, MSU, they also had given us a proposal, you know, to help us with, and what I brought forth, you know, a couple, a couple weeks back into you. So this planning, the county planning commission, we can either choose to have a county planning commission, I don't see why, but at a minimum cost. And so, if we have the expertise of the MSU guiding us, it's fine. Otherwise, we do have the drafts in place, and I think the current board within the county planning commission is a very workable board, has good influence, and we've got good variety of people who's been contributing really good. So, sir, with due respect, if you do not want to go with Region 2, I don't know how, and like you rightly said, it comes every time and every month. And if we do, I think the planning commission, the county planning commission should sit and decide of which direction they want to go. Because we do have the MSU proposal at hand, and we can definitely make use of that, if that's what this board wants to go. I definitely want to see us keep and, you know, go ahead and adopt after this ordinance that just sunsets July 2021, I'm aware. I think the county should be, you know, respectful of the fact that we can have a planning commission to oversee all what other townships are doing. And I don't see that we need to go to such an expensive affair, such as Region 2, if you don't want to. I appreciate Bruce wanting to write grants. For all these years, I think Jonesville Recreation Park has needed a grant. And if this can be possible at no charge, because I was about to ask him what his fees were, but since he said it was free, God bless you for that, but we do have.
I think free means no charge.
Okay, good, good, thank you. God bless you for that. So I think the, I think, sir, if you would like to wait and see what the county planning commission board, we're going to be meeting, I believe, next week, let this be a discussion and see where they want to go. But I appreciate you sharing this invoice with the Region 2 as well.
I think we should, it's okay to ask Brad, he's the chair of the Planning Commission. Can we ask him what he thinks, is that a?
We're going to discuss this, Commissioner Brown.
It's a discussion item, I'm not sure that we need any action on it.
No, not action, but just.
We're not gonna discuss it for the county planning commission, they're gonna discuss it as their.
Yeah, we'll, if they want to bring it back to us, Ruth, you know, at some point, it's fine.
And they will, absolutely. Give us that opportunity, sir, to discuss it.
Yep, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that they've invoiced it again, and we can respectfully ignore the invoice again. So, moving along, I have quite a stack here to share with you, much like Bruce brings a stack with him. So start your timer, Ruth.
Gotcha, gotcha.
First of all, and I'll hand this to Jody so she can have it, I printed it off, it's an update from medical care. Terry has been pretty good about sending updates, and I asked him to give me one so that I could read his update and not ad lib. First to be noted is, though, he says, mark this COVID-19 update for the meeting tomorrow. He sent this last night at 10:00 PM. Please keep in mind that this is information as of the time it was sent. So, quite frankly, 12 hours had elapsed. So, COVID-19 update, the medical care facility has six residents on the isolation unit, and eight staff members self-isolating at home. PPE supplies remain robust in all categories. Every person entering the facility is being screened, and all staff are tested at a minimum weekly. All residents are assessed for signs and symptoms of the virus at least three times per day, and tested no less than weekly. We are using a combination of in-house point-of-care rapid testing, Helix laboratories, and Sparrow laboratories to identify and confirm positive cases. We are performing upwards of 400 COVID-19 tests per week. Infection control protocols are ongoing, including those mentioned above, and in-house contact tracing to further identify and slow the spread of the virus. The facility continues to adhere to all reporting requirements prescribed by federal, state, and local health authorities. And he has a personal note, I want to thank our staff and community, nearly 300 dedicated individuals come to work and provide excellent care for our elders, and they are incredible. Our community is unbelievably supportive, and we thank you. Respectfully, Terry Estro. So that's the latest, greatest from out there, or at least 10 hours, 12 hours ago.
Are they accepting visitors right now?
No.
No visitors, okay.
Yep, they're still, especially with the spike in cases, and they have parameters from, I can't remember now exactly where, it's either the State Medical Care Association from, uh, I can't remember now exactly where, it's either the State Medical Care Association in combination with D H H S, if I recall correctly, but each time they have an individual test positive, it kind of knocks them backwards...
Sure.
...as far as being able to go to visitors.
So the six residents, they're isolated, another wing completely, or...
The east wing is an isolation wing. It is a separate, it has its own separate entrance and air filtration and everything.
Sure.
So they're isolated in that plane, so. And to my knowledge, we have not had any further incidents of death, and, you know, knock on wood, we don't have, but...
We'll be praying for them.
Absolutely. Um, we had an insurance meeting, what, a week ago or some such a matter. Um, got an email from John O'Connor. Uh, we were looking at about a four-point-seven percent increase. John went back to priority because the group that was in attendance, which was a handful of employees, uh, as well as Bruce and I and Derek, uh, the thought process was is go back to priority because switching entities is always a little more problematic than staying with the same entity. Uh, John went back to them, and they came down another fifty thousand. So basically, about a two-and-a-half percent increase now, more or less.
Two-point-three-five.
Thank you. And the only caveat, uh, outside of what they originally offered us was is they did offer us a rate cap of not, not to exceed nine percent for next year. So, um, and he's going to send out a new, uh, spreadsheet on that, and when he does, I'll make sure everybody gets a chance to look at it, and I'll have Derek send it out to the group, which Jason's part of that, uh, health group, if you will. Okay. Um, don't need that one. And I've been an advocate for masks, and everybody knows we lost my father-in-law. There is a, someone informed me of a shield that you can buy if you don't want to wear a mask, and it's, uh, RapidResponseP P E dot com, and it's, uh, they advertise it as a shield provides a comfortable alternative to wearing a mask, a high level of protection, and it actually has a little bit of a hood. I'll pass that around if you want to take a look at it.
Looks like Lawrence of Arabia.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, looks like...
But, uh, the person that provided me the information on this, uh, Quincy School District actually bought his one child one of these because they were in-person classroom, and, uh, the child has some health issues which may or may not be conducive. Uh, the child has seizures, and they hadn't figured that out, quite frankly. So it was recommended that they get one of these, and it has worked very well, so. Um, and Dr. Vogel last month reported that, you know, when both parties are wearing a mask, that the effective rate is about ninety-six percent. So, um, anyone that didn't see it last night on the news, Pfizer has come up with a vaccine that's ninety-plus percent effective. They are asking FDA to fast-track it, we'll see how that works, but they anticipate vaccinations for healthcare workers and frontline workers starting in December. Two shots, three weeks apart, and, uh...
Is it mandatory?
Well, like any of the other vaccine programs, it is voluntary.
Okay, got it.
But I guess, uh, the general population, they indicated on the news that, uh, probably wouldn't be until March or early spring because they're going to look at the, uh, frontline workers, uh, everything from first responders, uh, police, et cetera, and then start looking at the, uh, or, or looking at vaccinating the, uh, at-risk groups, and, uh, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
When you listened to the news last night, did they give any credit to President Trump for clearing off all the regulatory hurdles and putting in place work speed to develop these vaccines and get them done by the end of the year? And he's been very successful, and I'm sure they probably praised him on one side and on the other, didn't they?
Um, you must be referring to a different media source. But yes, they should give credit where credit's due, but...
Amen.
But they don't. Uh, moving red line, we got another invoice for you all, which I don't think we have done, I don't recall, but we can enclose a gift for the community, Hillsdale County Community Foundation. So if we could do it as a county board, or we can do it individually, so...
Individually.
I think individually is better.
Yeah, I think, uh, anyone that would like this is more than welcome to.
Like to take a look.
Yep, take a look at it.
I'll take a look, I'll see.
And let's see, last, well, this one, I got another one here. Region Two Planning Commission, if anyone is interested in sitting in on the meeting virtually, um...
What order does this sound?
Region Two Planning Commission.
Oh.
If you want to sit in on their meeting, this came to me, it was a meeting notice, uh, two P M on Thursday, November twelfth. The conference phone number is one seven zero one eight zero two five two seven one, and the access code is six three eight three one eight, and I believe you have to have that hashtag or number signed afterwards.
Hashtag, that's right. November twelfth, two P M?
Yes.
Thanks.
Anybody's interested, I'll pass that to you, because it's also got the minutes from last month's meeting as well.
Sorry.
All right. Last but not least, I've been sending out the partner updates to you, um, the one that came on eleven-nine, uh, which would be yesterday. New cases for Hillsdale County since October first, which is forty days. Uh, three hundred and ninety-one new cases in the last forty days. And this report yesterday showed a total of a hundred and three cases in the last three days. And I thought, another noteworthy thing that, I don't know if I sent this, but on October first, Hillsdale County had three, a total, now bear in mind, this is the total number of cases from the start to current. So at the start of October, we had three hundred and thirty cases. On October, or excuse me, November ninth, uh, the date of this report, we're up to seven hundred and twenty-one. So, um, and all three counties, quite frankly, are seeing the same or similar rises or spikes, if you will.
Do they also indicate underlying ailments?
Um, the Health Department is so overrun right now that they are, they'd have three people working on contact tracing, they are doing virtually everything they can do to try and keep up with the positive case increases, but they're just overwhelmed. So as far as any one underlying, um, no. I mean, there's no pinpoint...
There's no way of telling.
Not at this point in time. So I think the, uh, uh, there is a testing event to be held in Coldwater today, and I did print that off, but that would be a part of this report.
Yes, good. It's in the free event, is it? Free event, free testing, yeah.
Yes, yep. Okay, that's all I have, unless someone has a question. That brings us back up to public comment. Please approach and state your name, please.
Thank you, uh, my name's Richard Durbin. Uh, actually, I have a couple of comments. It was kind of, I guess, for a point of clarification on the budget finance thing, uh, you mentioned that the county was at a deficit because they were, uh, financing one of the deputies that had gotten injured on the job, and so they had to pay for his workers' comp, is that correct?
We weren't in deficit, no. We had to come up with five hundred million dollars, or, excuse me, five hundred thousand, five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, because that was our, under the contract we had with the workers' comp company, that's our...
Right, right, I understand what...
That's deductible.
Right, I understand what you're saying, but what you said was that you took money from other areas of the county that had been budgeted for those areas to pay for this deputy's workers' comp, is that correct?
I did, we did not take money from other areas of the budget.
That's not what you said.
Well, then I was wrong.
Okay.
When the budget was put together...
So you do have enough money with the fifty-six thousand dollars in the, uh, what was it called, the...
Childcare.
Childcare. So you do have that money is available then?
Because of the COVID money that has come in this year...
That's what I was getting at.
That money, that money is going to be replaced back into that fund.
Okay, so you're taking COVID money that was given off of, uh, uh, federal emergency management FEMA grant for...
Relief fund, yeah, relief.
Relief fund for COVID-related, and you took that money and put it into a childcare. That's what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I said.
Okay.
There were different pots of COVID money that came to us.
Right, I understand that.
Each one of those pots has to be spent according to federal rules.
Exactly.
One of those pots that came to us was approximately three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that paid for essential workers, we talked about earlier, for the months of, for the month of April.
Got it.
That three hundred and thirty thousand dollars went to pay...
You don't have to explain it to me, I'm very well familiar with federal...
Well, go ahead, because everybody else might know.
Federal grants and how they work.
That freed up three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of general fund money...
Right.
...that we didn't have to spend.
Only because of the FEMA money that you got for COVID.
Correct.
Okay, so you took the COVID money, you can call it general fund, you can call it whatever fund you want. You took COVID money that was given to you on a FEMA grant, or numerous FEMA grants, and you spent that money...
We haven't spent it, yeah.
Well, you put it back into your budget, right? And fifty-six thousand for childcare.
Well, it's going to be a whole lot more than fifty-six thousand.
Okay, good. And, and, but that's not what that money's intended for.
Well, what I just got through saying is that that money wasn't...
I know what you said, but what you're saying and what is the truth is actually two different things.
Okay.
You can't take FEMA grant money and reinvest it in your budget. That money is earmarked for specific COVID-related expenses.
That's exactly correct.
Okay, you do. But you took your money because you had to pay for the deputy's injury, and I understand that, I'm retired law enforcement too, I would, I would say, yeah, he, he earned that, that right to be taken care of. But you can't take funding from your county budget, pay for this over here, and then rely on COVID. You know what that does? Is it undermines the public's trust in the county council, because now it appears that it benefits the county to raise the COVID numbers to get COVID-related fi, funding for those patients. It does do that.
Now, first of all, let me clarify, normally, we don't engage in public comment, that's part of our gourd rules, okay?
Okay.
But to keep clarity with this, I'm going to allow it just from the standpoint that I think you missed a very important point here.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
The, the monies that we spent on COVID came out of the general fund. We spent those monies. The COVID dollars replaced them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
That's not what he said. That he said, what he said was that the funds came from various different county entities.
Yeah.
So you took those monies, not out of the general fund, you took those monies...
That one is all part of the general fund, it's just different funds within the general fund.
I know how county budgets work, it's not part of the general fund. The general fund is a separate fund, separate category within this...
It's all broken down in different items.
...within the county's budget, right? And when you do a budget...
You can get with...
You do a budget...
You can get with Commissioner Caswell afterwards, if you want further explanation.
So you're saying you don't want to answer my question?
We don't normally engage during public comment, but he'll be happy to answer your questions afterwards.
So it benefits the county to have higher COVID numbers, that's the impression it gives?
No, it's not.
It, I'm saying that's the impression it gives to me, the voting general public.
The perception, you're talking about perception.
Yeah, I'm not playing with words, I told you what it appears to me, and I'm the voting public, right?
The Health Department re, reports the actual COVID numbers.
No, they don't. They report numbers that are manufactured because if you have antibodies...
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, okay. And then I had another comment about, uh, the COVID numbers, actually, and the plan. The county's plan, you, you just updated the preparedness and response plan, and what you indicated was that that has no regard for the businesses that operate in the county. Is that correct? Why is that when an emergency or preparedness response plan should include the general public and businesses that operate within this county? It, that's what a, a preparedness plan does do. It helps to protect the citizens of the county. No comment. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
I do. And I hope that everyone's going to have a good day. Thank you for the identification back there, Richard. Uh, and quite a few other things, you've been writing it down. Uh, we did have, uh, a new thing come into our township about how you guys have applied a new assessor, uh, appointed, uh, in case we fail to have ours assessed, and so there's a cost to that. If we, if, I'm saying, if we do not have, if our fail, then it comes to the county for them to take over. So there will be an additional cost, or is he going to be salaried, or are we going to, you know, because it says on a binding contract for, but it mentions nothing of the money.
There's only a cost if he gets used.
Exactly, but that's not example. So I want the example, so I was going with, does it show that it's twenty dollars per, uh, uh, property, or is it going to change to where it's going to be expensive, is what we're paying sixty thousand now in our township just to have that done, sixty thousand? So eventually, all this other stuff should come together as well, so it shouldn't be as a, you know, unwarranted cost, just put it in the paper so that we can have it. The next was is, uh, the mental health lifeways, Bruce, you brought up, uh, this mental health. Now, absolutely, uh, there was a discussion of that sometime back, you brought it up about getting a hundred dollars out of the ambulance fund thing, going towards that issue from the hospital. Uh, I, I would then go back and say, uh, we found you could not do that because the lawyers were involved there that stopped that. So now we're back to Lifeways is the only one, and Lifeways, uh, as far as I know, most of the time, going back to, uh, I want to speak about the Sheriff's Department, that the virtual has been going across the board, and virtual has really gotten to destroy a lot more people because inside that... to destroy a lot more people, because inside that, they need the contact, they need more, not a camera, so it's really kind of becoming a detriment, and it's least costly, it doesn't even cost them for this to be put on virtual, like it would have of what she'd established it would cost per person to go and see, so they're charging us the same amount of money that it costs for this damn virtual. It's bothersome to see that this Mary Beth, this continuance of having this, so I'd like to break down her budget, and then I see that also, there's several things that are coming up, I believe that will be by, I don't want to say the new judge, she'll probably be talking with Mary Beth, or probably talking with you folks, was to bring up some other youth programs that's necessary needs under the mental also, so we can start putting the money where we need to put it, or shut this Lifeways down, take it either way, but we're not getting what we're supposed to have out of Lifeways, it's a joke, money just being spent for nothing, and so that's just the other. The last and the least, I don't mean to be so harsh this morning, but it's really a nice day to want to get out there, but what I hope you would possibly do for the future, I'd like to push a little bit of humor in, this here is something I hope that you folks could possibly adapt to, I mean, make it just sort of a good thing to put around the board, this is, where they call it, is a little pepper, you know, that's all they do. So I felt today that Nabrata did a lot of really good pepper at your statements, and I thought I'd like to award her that, and I hope that maybe the rest of you can all kind of adopt that and pass it to each other, I just thought I'd give a good gesture. Whoever done the best back in the day, then give it to that person.
I didn't do any puffing in the title.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else wish to address the board this morning, please? Glenn, you have to wait, you weren't quick enough. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Board Members, thank you very much, it is a beautiful day today, just a couple of things, first speaking in regards to the planning commission, I did have an opportunity yesterday to meet with Commissioner Gaines before she took out for Florida, but anyways, we did discuss the planning commission as far as the budget for next year, I would continue to encourage you to fund that at the level requested, just brutally honestly, if you want a master plan, and I'm not going to stand here today before you and advocate one way or the other, but if you want a master plan, and you want a county planning commission, $280 in the budget next year is simply not even going to cover the mailing, the required mailings that we have to do to reformulate a master plan, so I would ask you to give some careful consideration, and you would be much better served in spending $12,000 investing in your county planning commission than investing in a Region Two Planning Commission whose real sole purpose is to grow the size of government, and I hope that all of you as elected Republicans would be opposed the idea of growing the size of government, whether it be at the county level or any other level. Changing horses to my township hat, I'm kind of disappointed that you took $4,000 away from townships today, I named that number of $4,000 because I did hear Commissioner Caswell say that the county share was $4,000 bucks, and the allocation is 25% each, so I assumed that that $150 per township and other units comes out to about $4,000, which would be 25%, and in fact, that's what you did, because it was a credit that they were receiving on their equalization bills, so that money just doesn't go away, that's $150, if they're getting a bill that's more than zero, that, and they were getting a credit for $150, now they are going to, if they have to pay a bill for those services, they're going to have to make up that $150, so you actually did take some money, and I will go back to that the county general fund has about $10.5 million in it, and every single dollar in that budget has a constituency, in this case, the constituency is township government, and that money does have to come from somewhere, I understand completely, but it is money that you have now taken away from township government. Just a couple other things, talking earlier about allocating for mental health transports, I can tell you from having worked in the world of EMS for Michigan's largest private EMS company, that behavioral transports, those taking those patients anytime they man or two facilities in Saginaw or Bremen, Indiana, where you will burn entire ship, taking a patient, Indianapolis, I've done transports from Jackson to Indianapolis, that's just a normal part of transport EMS, and a lot of people think of ambulances as sitting someplace, whether it's in a station or out on point someplace, and they're there when you or luck one has a medical emergency, but I can tell you that for every time that that ambulance goes out and picks somebody up over here at the high-rise, or medical care facility, or one of the private skilled nursing facilities, or semi-skilled nursing facilities, grandma or grandpa or Uncle Charlie also gets the same ambulance and the same crew that uses those same ambulance millage dollars to take them back in a non-911, which is no different, it's a medically necessary transport, and we get a statement of medical necessity when we take that patient, it's part of our paperwork when we take that behavioral transport, so there really isn't any difference whether it's, as far as, unless you're specifically budgeting money that is only used for emergency calls and not for operations and for equipment, that same operations and that same equipment is used for both medically necessary, non-emergency transport, and regular transports. And the last item that I have for you, and I'm sorry, the sheriff, you know, I'm sorry, you are so bad, sheriff, as a retired firefighter, I would like to encourage you, as you are looking at your body armor grant, and I'm not asking for any dollars out of this, but I would encourage you, I'm sure you're familiar with the concept of rescue task force, great asset if we ever have a critical incident in this county, and I would encourage you as part of that grant to at least offer to our local EMS agencies and fire agencies within the county, the opportunity that they might be able to purchase, piggyback on that and get the quantity price when you are buying that body armor, those plate carriers, that they might be able to piggyback on that, at least have the opportunity, taking advantage of that larger purchase, to get a couple of those at all of our agencies within the county, so in the event we were ever need that rescue task force, that they would have that asset available to you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Brad. Go ahead, Glenn. Good morning.
I won't be saying anything, so just. I agree with Brad on this 25% thing, there was, it was just another strong-armed move from the county, it seemed, there was no discussion with any supervisors I know of that are townships, and that's kind of, that's kind of a bad precedent to set, to just go ahead and do something and just blindside everyone. As far as the planning commission, I've, I've just never had a whole lot of love for them, they seem to be outside-type people, they don't seem to care about anything except making government bigger, they're not elected, I would suggest, in our county, that possibly a planning commission could be made up of elected officials in our townships, instead of having some outside bunch come along, we know what we have in our county, we know the needs of our people in our county, why would we want to go anyplace else?
Thank you, Glenn. Anyone else wish to address the board this morning? I would like to reread, which I know I, and I know there's going to be follow-up with Nick and Bruce, on the resolution that Brad and Glenn both referred to, the second to the last paragraph indicates that a request be made to all townships and cities, asking them to forego the 25%, so it's not a strong-armed move, it's, there's going to be a letter and a request, and so the way I interpreted that is that if that request is denied by all the townships or the cities, then this resolution basically doesn't hold water.
That's the way I understood, I thought it was a request.
So just, just for clarification, if you read that second to the last paragraph, I think it's pretty clear that it's, it's going to be followed up with a letter and a copy of this explaining the situation, and as it pertains to GIS, so, with that said, additional business, name of.
I'm good, sir.
Ruth?
So about the GIS, if this, I understood this to be a request, and the townships, it's opening up discussion with the townships, the townships can always come back and say, you know, we don't want to do this, here's an idea for how to fund the GIS going forward that would be a better idea and a better, a better thing to do, that's what needs to happen, if they don't want to do it, then they should come back with an idea for us on how to fund that GIS system. The second thing I want to say is, Bob Eichler, respectfully, sir, you said something about Lifeways, I would like to have you go around and talk to all the people in Hillsdale County who have benefited from those Lifeways that millage dollars in the last couple of years, because it's literally changed people's lives, talk to some of the Spark parents that their kids have never been able to access those facilities there on Waldron Street, that now are getting transported because of that new van, it has opened up a whole new world for those kids, go talk to the people in the jail that now have that facility in the jail that is being paid for by Lifeways, and how that's affecting them, I'd like to have you go around and talk to all the people in Hillsdale County who have benefited from those millage dollars before you say bad things about it. As far as I'm concerned, the Lifeways mental health millage dollars are one of the best things that's ever happened in Hillsdale County, we've never had it before, ever, and it's all these new things that we've, that we've gotten on this board, on this county commissioners board, that is moving Hillsdale County forward and making us visionary, which is what elected officials are supposed to be, so what you need to do, respectfully speaking, is you need to look at the results that we're getting, and I would just very, very respectfully disagree with you about Lifeways, because that is making a huge impact in Hillsdale County for the positive, for people, and that's what we're here, that's what we're here to do. There was something else I was going to say, and I can't remember what it was right now.
Thank you, Ruth.
They may come back.
Your comment.
Even go talk to those people and hear from them, not from us, but from the people that are benefiting from it, because I haven't heard a single person complain or say it was no good, other than you, all I've heard is how this has helped us and how this has made things so much better for us, and thank us for it.
Well, this is your comment, thank you very much for addressing it, I have done that, I have gone to the jail, I have also spoke to other people, so I wouldn't have brought that up just because of the incident, now, the other was, you just mentioned somebody's name, and in fact, that would be in Fracks on the Hipper, you recall, you just put out someone's name, please do not refer to bringing out anyone's name.
I didn't bring out anybody's name.
You said, go talk to that family.
I said the facility on Waldron Street, I never said a person's name.
You didn't say.
No, sir.
I'll take the recording.
I took, you took the recording, I said the facility on Waldron Street, I never said a person's name.
My apologies, so.
Very respectfully, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Ruth, do you have any additional business?
The only thing is, that all of the grant money that we applied for from the federal government, from the state government, and so on, and by the way, we didn't get, unless, I may be mistaken, but I don't believe I am, we didn't get any FEMA money, none of that grant money ever requested us to list out how many COVID cases we had, that had nothing to do with anything, so I just want to make that point, thank you.
Okay, with that, we stand adjourned, thank you all for coming.